Alright, everyone, I want to call the Patent Township Order Supervisors Meeting on September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, to order at five thirty-three, if we could all stand for the saying of our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the Church of St. One nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I want to thank all of those who have shown up for our meeting, both in person and over Zoom. I will ask if there's any additions to the posted agenda.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I can't hear anything.
Oh, CNET's working on it.
Test, test?
Are we good now?
Now I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, no additions to the posted agenda. At this time, we'll move to public comments. Any residents with comments? Sorry, Supervisor Abrams.
I had a concern, it was actually about something that was decided on last month, and after talking with our assistant manager, they're actually looking into this already, so I have nothing to say about it at the moment.
Alright, so, any residents or taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest. I'll just ask that if you have anything to say that is related to anything in our agenda, that you just wait that time. So, I'll open it up now to any public comments. Alright, seeing none, we will shift and move to item number three, presentations. We have a proclamation honoring Hispanic Heritage Month.
So, Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated September fifteenth through October fifteenth, and we're asking the board to consider proclaiming September through October as Hispanic Heritage Month.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Whatever.
Or first, depending.
Any comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Alright, moving on, proclamation proclaiming suicide, for Suicide Prevention Month.
September is Suicide Prevention Month, and September tenth is Suicide Awareness and Prevention Day.
Alright, so I will take a motion to approve this proclamation.
So moved.
Have a second? Alright, any discussions? As a mental health professional, this is a near and dear topic to me. I'm glad that we're honoring this month and bringing, you know, recognition and awareness to it. I think it's important for us to really focus in on our youth, as we can see that our youth are experiencing increasing rates of suicide, and various reasons speculated for that. And one of those top things being, you know, loneliness and isolation. And so, any ways that we can get our young people especially engaged, that is going to lead to more helpful outcomes in the long run. So, especially, nah, I won't say that, but, yeah. That's all I got for this. Alright, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to item number four, Public Safety, or Monthly Report, Chief.
Alright, thank you very much, good evening, everyone. August was an extremely busy month for the police department. In the report, you'll notice that we did two hundred and fifty-five traffic stops. We wrote thirty-eight citations, five parking tickets, handled twenty-four criminal arrests. Bike patrol took a lot of advantage of the great weather we've had, riding a hundred and seventeen miles, doing a hundred and sixty-five business checks, handling fifteen incidents, doing three vacation home checks, and then actually even stalking two vehicles while on bike. Under department notes, it can be done, I've done it before, so, usually in a parking lot setting, typically, so. It can be done, it's difficult, but it can be done. Under department notes, thirty-two-year-old male was arrested for criminal mischief. He had shot a pellet gun at a victim's truck, which caused damage, including a broken mirror, window, and flat tire. Thirty-three-year-old male was arrested for endangering the welfare of a child. The male had headbutted a door while holding his small child, and that incident was captured on camera. Fifty-year-old male was arrested for invasion of privacy. We'd actually talked about this individual a few months ago. As a follow-up to that investigation, we did continue to investigate the case, did a search warrant on that individual's phone, and found evidence that he had recorded a female previously while she was naked inside her residence, on his phone without her consent. The male was clearly standing outside of her residence when he made the recording, so subsequently, he's being charged again for that information that we found on his phone. There was eight arrests made for retail theft, four for driving under the influence. We served six warrants of the twelve that we attempted, and we did six vacation home checks. We did use force during one incident in the month of August. Our officers were going to serve an arrest warrant on an individual that we had charges for stalking and harassing an individual. We were told by another agency locally that the last time that individual had interaction with the police, he brandished a knife during their confrontation with them. Our officers did a fantastic job coming up with a plan to make sure it was done safely, coordinated with the state college borough police department. Were able to talk that male into coming outside without any weapons on him. Were able to get him under control, take him into custody without incident. No injuries reported, and he was dealt with in the court process as we intended. Under community relations, Officer Finocchio attended the National Night Out, which was hosted by the Spring Township Police Department. That was at the Giant on the Benner Pike earlier in the month. Officer Tuskovich had a very busy month, getting, preparing for school to come back in session at State College Area School District. He did an opening day assembly for staff, and then he also did an in-service safety presentation at our middle school. Sergeant Chapanko gave a bike safety presentation, and then participated in a bike rodeo for Boy Scout Troop Three Seventy-Five. Officer Tuskovich provided active shooter training for the staff at Penn Highlands Hospital, and then he also trained the members of the Alpha Fire Police in that training as well, as they requested us to do that. Officer Vardzel conducted a free child safety installation inspection event at the ABC Children's Center out by Graysew Woods Elementary. Officer Tuskovich provided safety and security presentation for the State College Area School District Department of Transportation, specifically the bus drivers in the transportation department. And then Officer Tuskovich and I participated in the parade at the Center County Ranch Fair. Under training department activities, Detective Slade attended an understanding and supporting commercially sexually exploited children training. Officer Kaufman attended a traffic safety conference. Detective Slade also attended a trauma notification training. Sergeant Schaefer attended the Boys Week at Camp Cadet. Officer Brooks also assisted with that camp. And then Officer Brooks participated in a joint criminal interdiction detail with the Pennsylvania State Police. He was paired up with a trooper. They subsequently stopped a vehicle on Interstate eighty in Benner Township. Clearly, the operator was very nervous, and while they were interacting with him, they noticed some indicators of criminal activity. K-9 unit arrived, hit on the vehicle. With the consent of the operator, they searched the vehicle and located thirty-two thousand dollars in cash that was believed to be, and determined to believe, related to drug transaction money. Officer Snyder and Graff did their two days of training. They also participated in the Great Ranch Fair Parade as well, and I will say, Graff was absolutely the star of the show. I was in the vehicle, he was walking directly behind me, and nobody really cared about our candy, they just saw the dog. And they were super excited about seeing Graff and his badge, they really thought his badge was super cute, that he has his badge on his collar, so. They really ate up Graff, and he was the star of the parade, for sure, so. I attended a couple of Penn State football meetings in preparation for our officers assisting them with the football games. I did attend the emergency vehicle operator course that all of our officers take for safely driving our cruisers. I attended a Criminal Justice Advisory Board meeting, the Chiefs meeting, and also the CCU meeting. I mentioned thirty-two thousand dollars in cash, I have a photo of the seizure, so that's the money that, again, was taken off on a traffic stop during an interdiction detail on I-80 with PSP. Received a nice letter from Chief Salliers, just thanking us for our participation in the National Night Out, and again, just talking about how, you know, we have such a great relationship with all the other agencies here in Center County. Received a really nice letter also from Ted Gabriel, Alpha Fire Police, really to Officer Tuskovich, thanking him for, again, that active shooter training. He sums it up really, again, with how great we work with everybody, his last sentence in this is, "Just thank you for the outstanding relationship between your department and the Alpha Fire Police." Again, just goes to show how well we work with all the other agencies, police, fire, EMS in the area. Lastly, a performance report for Officer Brooks, Brahaski, and Officer Kaufman. Earlier in the month in August, Ferguson Township Police received a report of a juvenile male who was found hanging from a rope in his bedroom. Ferguson was busy on other calls and didn't have a unit to respond, so those three officers responded. Again, we worked super close with Ferguson Township, as we're cross-sword with them. They arrived on scene and took over CPR on the patient who had no pulse. Officer Brooks attached to AED, while Officer Brahaski took over chest compressions, and Officer Kaufman administered rescue breathing. The three officers continued to provide CPR until EMS arrived and took over, and happily, the patient did regain a pulse on scene there. He was transported to the hospital for more urgent care, but their actions, again, speak highly, highly, highly to their, you know, to them and to the department. But again, a thank you to the board for providing us with proper equipment to do our jobs. The training, the equipment, you know, we, I know Kent Canable has said it before, we are able to get to these scenes faster, enabling us to have the training and the equipment to handle these situations, and to sustain a patient who's in cardiac arrest until we can get them to the advanced care is why we have such a high save rate in our area. So, again, testament to these officers did a fantastic job on this incident. We got a nice thank you for Ferguson as well on that, so. Lastly, just our calls for service, four hundred and three in the month of August. That's up a little bit from the three hundred and eighty-one in July. You're going to see our numbers probably continue to increase as our offices are very active in the school zones right now, so you'll see a lot of school checks in the September meeting, report. Fifty-six of our calls were health and safety EMS assists, and thirty-three were traffic-related calls. And that completes my report.
Thanks, Chief, any questions, comments from the board?
Just the chair. Chief, I want to continue to thank you and our department officers. Being on a Public Safety Committee for COG, they constantly thank the hard work that you, our officers, get to a situation before EMS, and the training, and how we continue to save lives. So, please, thank your officers from this board, you know, and continuing to be in the forefront in working with our EMS partners in fire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Abrams?
Number of people at the village where I live talked about the recent letter that the township send out, what it's called?
The newsletter?
The newsletter, about how good it was. And so, now we're talking about public safety, maybe there should be an article on the next one, really lighting that up, because a lot of people don't realize the important role of police play in safety.
And I have to give credit to Chief Kent Canable, Life Link Ambulance, the first to sing our praises, so we appreciate it. You know, we're just happy that we're able to help out in those situations, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's all-encompassing suicidality, and oftentimes, we don't get to hear about the saves, the unsuccessful suicides, and so, yeah, just really appreciative for the work of, you know, our officers, and, you know, you leading the way, and I'll just also reinforce and hope that our people are debriefing in the ways that they need to, and utilizing the various mental health supports and other things, because it can be pretty traumatic, the vicarious, you know, trauma that our first responders go through in engaging in these situations, so, thank you. And I don't want to lighten the mood too much, but I can appreciate dog people. I'm wondering if we need like a cat? For our police department?
We have an annual animal sanctuary outside the office upstairs, because we have a township employee who feeds the squirrels and the groundhogs, and they were due there today, so I think we're, we've got it covered. Oh, yeah, no, we have all of them.
I mean, we need a cat in a parade, right? Appreciate Graff, but, alright. If there's nothing else, a cat badge, yes. Moving on, Supervisor Abrams?
Just thank you for that brief pause.
Okay, item number B, purchase of two thousand and twenty-five Ford Intercept, Police Interceptor Utility.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, unfortunately, on August twenty-third of this year, one of our vehicles, a patrol vehicle, a Mark Patrol vehicle, was involved in a motor vehicle accident. Our officer was traveling southbound on Atherton, and a vehicle pulled out in front of him. We had the green light, a vehicle came across, a red light right in front of him, and they collided. Luckily, very minor injury to the officer, he had a couple bumps and bruises, but it was okay. Was checked out and cleared for duty right away, and luckily, everybody in the other vehicle was fine. There was no injuries that were major. However, our vehicle was severely damaged, it deployed all the airbags in it, and the insurance company did declare it as a total loss. So, we obviously need to replace that vehicle. Our fleet is only seven vehicles, plus the K-9 vehicle, so we really rely on having seven vehicles available to us and to our officers. So, this is asking for the board approval for us to move forward with the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-five Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle. We did get a CoStarz pricing quote, government contract for forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Most, actually, just about all of the technology, the lighting, things like that, from the old vehicle, will be able to be moved over to the new vehicle, with the exception of a dash mount and a bracket for a console. And then, obviously, the graphics, we'll have to get new graphics put on a new vehicle. So, with the additional items, those three items that we have to buy in addition are nine hundred and forty-two dollars, bringing the total cost to forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. I believe there are, the copies of the quotes were included in your agenda materials. And we are expecting the insurance company to pick up, it's going to be about half of our costs there at the end of this, so. So, again, just asking the board to approve the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-five Ford Police Interceptor Utility for forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars.
I want to entertain a motion before we talk about it?
Second.
Alright, discussion? And can we make sure to talk closer to our mics, please? Were you going to say something, Supervisor Abrams?
Oh, I was seconding.
Okay. Whose insurance is paying?
So, their insurance will pay. It's not our insurance, but the value of the vehicle, it was a two thousand and twenty-two with about fifty-three thousand miles on it, so the value of the vehicle is about half of a new car.
Police vehicles get used pretty hard compared to a regular passenger vehicle, so that's why the value was lower on it.
I never understood, or I guess liked, that if someone causes an accident, and then they only pay me up to what the car is worth, and then I have to foot the bill for the rest.
I didn't disagree. Speak in the mic.
A lot of us, yeah.
Couldn't hear.
I was speaking in the mic. Do I need to be louder?
Yeah.
Anyway. Okay, did Supervisor Whitman?
No, I agree with you, been there. You know, only got a fraction of the value. I mean, I mean, got the value, but could not buy a new car with that, another car.
Okay, well, we got to do what we got to do. Alright, well, there's a motion on the floor, that's been seconded. If no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item number C, amending the soliciting ordinance.
So, I'll take this, and then the chief can chime in as needed. We've been seeing recently an uptick in individuals who are soliciting money in front of commercial businesses in the township. So, these are in parking lots, also along Atherton Street, along public sidewalks. What we typically do when we respond, when we see a person who's doing this, our officers go out, they ask the person if they need any assistance, and then they try to connect the person with some services in the community. So, we do try to go out and provide assistance to the person. We do not currently have any ordinances that prohibit soliciting for money, which is also commonly called panhandling. So, we have no way to move these individuals to a different location. In the incidents of when they're soliciting on Atherton Street, on that public sidewalk, it becomes an issue, because people, kind-hearted folks, get out of their cars, want to help, other people get out to want to talk to the person, it becomes a bit of a public safety concern. So, I reached out to our neighboring municipalities to see how they were handling this issue, because we want to be sensitive that there are folks who do need assistance in our community, but also, we need to look at the public safety aspect of it. College Township was the only one who responded that has any kind of a regulation on the book, and the way they're handling it, Tyler and I think makes a little bit of sense. And basically, what they're doing is, they amended their soliciting ordinance to include soliciting for money in their definition. So, they require, just like we do, a permit to solicit. So, the, actually, the one individual who's been soliciting over here for money came from College Township, because he was moved along for not having a permit. So, this gives, would give us a way to move some of these individuals along if they don't, you know, need services or not requiring help. So, we would like to propose that we try this over here, we amend our soliciting definition to include the act of requesting something, especially money, in that definition. Now, I will say, we do have within our ordinance some things that are exempt from it. That includes any honorably discharged veteran of the armed services doesn't have to get a permit, that's already in the ordinance. Also, persons soliciting for political, religious, religious or nonprofit entities that are exempt under state or federal law. So, that takes care of some of the concerns about free speech. So, we wanted to get your feeling as to what you wanted to do with this. If you're inclined to consider it further, we can put together the ordinance language for the amendment, and then you could have a public hearing and talk about it on the twenty-fourth. It's truly something we want your feedback on.
Supervisor Whitman?
So, my first concern on reading this was that it might be a transgression on the freedom of speech. I understand that is not the case if the panhandling occurs on private property. But you also just mentioned that if some of it occurs on a public sidewalk, there, I get it, that it's a very important safety issue, and I don't mean to dismiss that, but I'm, I am a little worried about any impact that it would have on freedom of speech. I know that a lot of municipalities have considered the, this kind of ordinance, and have also compared it to the, the impact that it would have on freedom of speech. And I believe that nationally, it's not been decided, at least not at the Supreme Court, so. If you could, and I talked to Betsy Dupuy earlier, but I guess I'm specifically asking about any soliciting, panhandling that occurs on public property.
So, the change that we're proposing is that if folks want to continue this kind of activity, they would be allowed to do it as long as they applied for a permit and received a permit from the township.
But I, I looked at the ordinance for the, required to receive a permit, and it seemed that they need to have proof of employer or reason for doing it.
Well, they, we would have to have one of our application, because these folks wouldn't be working, obviously, they're not like the renewal by Anderson people who seem to be out, I mean, it's not that kind of a service, they're not selling a service. They would be able to, we just amend the application, they would be able to apply for and receive a permit from us.
Okay, would your officers, Chief Dolly, feel comfortable, or would they be perhaps consistent in giving that information to somebody who, well, to anybody who was, they had approached who was on public property?
Yes, certainly, Amy did a good job of kind of outlining how we approach these, you know, truly, again, we're, we're public safety. So, we're, if somebody needs something, and we can connect them through a resource, that's our job, you know, that's, that's. So, in Center County, quite frankly, in the center region, we have a lot of resources that are available to help people out in these types of situations as well. So, our officers go into that always thinking first, you know, can we help you with something? Can we connect you with a resource, do you need housing, do you need, you know, food, gas, and whatever it is? And we, we know where to go and where to turn to get these people into those types of situations. So, yeah, I mean, if, you know, if we deal with somebody, often, they don't accept any of our offer of assistance, which is fine. But certainly, if this was something that where they needed to have a permit, we would explain that to them and say, hey, listen, in Patent Township, you have to have a permit to engage in this type of activity on private or public property. Here's the information, you can go to the website, you can come into the office, there's different ways. there's different ways you can, you know, to accomplish that.
That, yeah, that sounds great. I'm also wondering if you, it would be appropriate to ask an officer to specifically say, you don't need to be connected to a company to come into the township to ask for a permit?
Certainly.
Because I, I think the perception of people who are panhandling out of need is one of distrust and, and lack of knowledge. And I don't mean to be painting a general picture, but I think that might be the case. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Abrams?
In our ethics thing that we sign every year, I've never seen anything about solicitation within, for example, of one board member soliciting funds from another board member, a group of board members for, for a political purpose. And, so, I assume since I've never seen it there, that goes along with what you said about the political-type things are excluded from this ordinance?
So, yes, political activities are generally excluded because it's a federal, under the Constitution of Free Speech, kind of activity. What you're speaking about with your, your ethics code that you sign every year, there may be something, we're going to try to do a code of conduct for elected officials, starting with the New Year, so everybody signs on, everybody that gets elected to the board understands what their roles and responsibilities are. So, that's something the board could discuss as well, putting in that code of conduct.
Supervisor Rob?
My concern is that Patton's becoming the permit township. Every time, it seems like every time we're turning around, we need a permit for this, we need a permit for that, we need a permit. Now, we're at soliciting a permit on the lease of them. You know, I think we've all seen some form of solicitation. I know, I've seen it at Walmart. There's a gentleman that has five kids in, in a van. And I may be at fault because I get out, and I ask, do they need help? I give them information, I give them money to feed their kids. And my concern is, where do we draw the line of soliciting? I know we're protected as veterans, we're protected as political entities. But, what for those who are not? And as we talked about, our police officers being the top, they're compassionate. I know our officers are. And as they're approaching individuals, and not all individuals are good and have honorable solutions to getting funds. I'm just looking at revising our old ordinance and taking some time to do a little research, not only for State College, but some of the organizations that help these individuals. I'm a little torn to move on that tonight. I would like a little more information on how we go about doing this in the right way. Chief, I understand our officers continue to be called, and how they are truly compassionate when they come upon that point, that kind of a situation. But, I also want to be able to get the information out to those of us who have big hearts in helping these individuals who are soliciting the right way. I just need a little more time to, to vote on it. Chief?
Yes, I, I think this is a good opportunity for me to explain another piece of this, too. So, you mentioned that our officers getting called, we are getting calls, especially on private property, right? So, private property owners, one thing that, that I feel like this might be able to give us a little bit more latitude is to avoid arresting someone.
Okay.
So, if we get a call from a private property owner who says, there's this individual who is, and they're involved in this activity on my property, I don't want them here doing that. I've gone out, I've talked to them about it, my, my property is posted with signs prohibiting the activity that they're doing on my property. They've told me they're going to continue to be here and not do anything about it. They call us and expect us to come down and deal with that situation. We have options then. When we get there, our officers are still going to do what, like I said, what we do. We're going to offer services, see if there's somewhere we can help them. But ultimately, on private property, we're going to tell them, you have to leave. The private property owner is telling you, you cannot be here doing what you're doing, it's posted properly, you are defiant trespassing. You, you know, it is, it is a crime. If they continue to say they're not going to leave, then we put them in handcuffs and arrest them for defiant trespass. So, again, this is just maybe just some language to help us to, to say, hey, there's a, there's, there's an avenue for you to be able to do this legally in Patton Township. I, I know you said, you know, when I continue to add permits to everything, but, you know, it's, it's part of our solicitation ordinance that we already have enacted, we just changed some, you know, some language in the definition. You can apply for a permit to legally do this then, on private and public property.
So, are you seeing more, when you're seeing private, in the residential community, are you seeing this more on a business, okay?
Yeah, it's commercial.
And I did look, by the way, the city of Harrisburg has enacted pretty strict panhandling regulations, and there's been a huge pushback from the Harrisburg community about that. And I don't think we want to go that direction because there are individuals that truly need the help, that are out there trying to get the assistance. And I don't think we want to go the route of having, you know, very, the city of Harrisburg has much different problems than we have, but having very cumbersome regulations. I think we just want a way that we can move the people along without our officers arresting them and have a way to say, you can legally do this, right? You just need to come and obtain this permit from us, and then you can still do this activity. I know that College Township has moved these, State College Police does, College Township's policing, but they've moved folks along, but then they move them to jurisdictions where there aren't regulations, right? So, it's just, it's like we're, it's a shell game, right? We're moving the shells around. So, I just want to find a way that people can still get assistance without having, I just think panhandling regulations are probably not the way we want to go. I, I think there's a, we have to find a compassionate middle, if I can call it that.
What's on the books now, has it been effective, or has it, has it not been effective?
You know, what's on the books now, our officers don't really have any choice. There's no choice there. You know, it's, if it's private property, the property owner has, they've been, this individual's been notified properly that the activity they're doing is continued trespassing. Our choice is to arrest them. You know, and, so, you know, the ordinance as it's written right now does not address this type of activity at all.
So, if we agree to the new revise, you would give them, what, a warning?
Yeah, we, we would, we would tell them what they're doing, we have an ordinance that prohibits them from doing that. So, yes, that, you know, you cannot do what you're doing here, unfortunately, you need to move on to some other location that where you're doing it here in Patton Township, we have an ordinance that prohibits you from, from soliciting for money unless you have a permit.
So, in reality, it's almost the same because if you get there and you're on a private property, and our officers are saying, either move, or we have to arrest you. You know, so, okay.
I'll go to Supervisor Abrams, just for clarification, Chief. Did you, did you say if you get a permit, you can then solicit for money on both private and public?
So, a permit, I, I think our ordinance does cover both private and public. However, if a private property owner has issue with somebody engaged in this activity and it's, again, it's properly posted, active communication has been given to the actor, that is kind of the, the requirement by law under defiant trespass, that they have to be notified legally that they are not allowed to be doing what they're doing. So, if it is on private property, the private property owner could still ask for us to enforce the, the lead, the, the state statute of defiant trespass.
Okay, I guess what's not making sense then is if you, if we were to enact this ordinance, and you go out and you say, hey, you need to move along, I don't want to move along, well, you can apply for a permit to then solicit for monies on likely some public type of place.
Correct.
But, if we don't enact the ordinance, they can still solicit on a public place because it's, it's not necessarily illegal.
Correct, they can, but again, the only thing then is, our officers don't have any, any real recourse. The biggest thing that we're seeing is, is public safety issues. So, the individual who, quite frankly, we've dealt with an individual at some of our commercial establishments 30 times this summer, probably. Some of it has been phone calls from public, some of it has been phone calls from businesses in the area who don't want that individual outside of their, but we explained to them, if they're on the sidewalk, it's public. So, again, there's not much that we can do about that. This would give us some latitude to say, hey, you can't do it here. But, what we're seeing is that individual isn't just remaining on the public sidewalk. If a vehicle stops and has, hey, I got money, they're walking onto the private property, which then the private property folks are getting upset about. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of like, this would give our officers just some type, some type of an ability to try to get them to move to another location, especially when we're getting complaints like we've been getting this past summer.
Yeah, so, I, it, it still, to me, feels dubious because I was researching some stuff, and I am not in the law profession, so I will not claim that I know and understand this stuff fully. But, it still seems dubious that we can restrict soliciting for monies on public property. I think what you're talking about is a different issue, which is if you're creating some type of hazard, what are our laws or policies when it comes to creating some type of hazard? And so, are those the statutes, or whatever you would call them, that we should actually be enforcing as opposed to putting up a, having to put an ordinance for, you know, panhandling?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, there's things that, I mean, you can't, for instance, you can't inhibit the flow of traffic, right? So, I mean, you can't, if somebody's standing on North Atherton Street, that's obviously a major issue for their safety, but also for the traveling, the motor public. So, so there are some statutes that could apply, certainly. You know, it just depends on, on the circumstances of, of what we're dealing with that day. Again, this, one individual in particular, we've been dealing with on a, on a very frequent basis, that, again, this would just give us a little bit of an option to, to deal with that type of an individual. But, I understand.
And I know there's a name attached to every rule in law. And to Supervisor Rob, Rob's point, I don't know if we want to necessarily go that route because of one frequent flyer. I'm not saying that what this individual's doing isn't an issue, or that others aren't doing it. I just think, you know, what is the path of least resistance of their mechanisms that we already have in place that we can just enforce a little bit more? I think that feels like a better route to go because even if they did acquire a permit and still violated the permit, what, what's the consequence?
Fine.
Okay.
Supervisor Heskeski has her hand up.
I want to go to Supervisor Rob first, and then Supervisor Heskeski.
No.
All right, Supervisor Abrams, and then Supervisor.
Okay. I agree with Pam's concern that maybe we should study this a little more before doing something. To me, the biggest annoyance is phone calls. Today, for example, I got four phone calls saying the same thing, that claiming that Medicare services have been changed by the president or somebody, and they want to talk about medic, about my Medicare. It's none of their business, really, and they shouldn't be calling me. And many of these people, I think, are engaged in scams. And if you call them back, you often find that, you get a recording saying, this number is not in service any longer. Now, if the phone company knows that the number is not in service anymore, with today's technology, you would think that they'd be able to prevent those kinds of calls from continually being made if they know that, if they know that the phone number doesn't work. So, to me, that's a million times worse than any of these other things. So, there, there are a number of issues with this. But, I would agree with Pam on this particular thing. Let's look at it for another month or two, and then come to a decision.
I like to support this. I think this is a good middle ground. It is a good way of reducing fraud and scams if people have to go and get a permit. I think the action of getting a permit also gives us an opportunity to help someone, to give them help that they might need. Whereas, they might, if they are out on the street, they might be with, you know, talking to a police officer, they might be nervous about, you know, accepting all the help that our police officers give out well meaningly. So, I, I, I support this idea.
It still seems legally dubious to me. And I guess if someone did, it would be rare, probably wouldn't happen. But, if someone did bring a lawsuit for that, then it feels like that would be a lot more expensive to defend that than just not do this and, you know, use the other mechanisms that we already have in place. Two more things. One, how is there a carve-out for honorably discharged military personnel?
That was in our existing ordinance. Our ordinance was written for soliciting in the 1970s, 1980s. Yeah, and it's.
It's a federal law.
So, it's been in there since, yep.
I was just going to say, I'll forget about this until I have to look up an ordinance, that you can go pretty easily and search the ordinances and read them. So, it's the E.
E-code.
E-code, yeah. So, that ordinance was printed out in full, and you can just see what's already there.
I guess I get, I get the, the ordinances there. I guess the rationale.
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense to me that there would be a carve-out?
No, but, but I think there are a lot of, well, there are a lot of carve-outs for, certainly for veterans, or a lot of dispensations given for veterans. Preference and hiring, for example, in certain instances, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
I, I mean, I agree with, I, I think it's been researched enough. I think on our parts, it would be helpful for us to better understand this so that we are more informed about, you know, how we wish to vote. I, I think I would agree with moving this forward, actually, so that then something can be drafted and open it up to public comment. I would love to hear from the public about this. So, I, I don't want to necessarily delay doing that because I think Amy did a good job researching and bringing this to us, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Is it possible, since we have our solicitor here, I would just like to hear Betsy's input on this. Since you've been here when we had the prior ordinance, right?
Sort of, it's been a little long time, 70s, I think.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Please, some clarity.
I haven't looked at all of the legal ramifications. We've talked about this briefly, and most of the context we talked about was the inability of private businesses who are open to the public to be able to maintain their sidewalks and manage that. But, I do know that there are. But I do know that there are panhandling ordinances and restrictions across the country. Some of them are in cities where they have broader discretion, but the principle here is not necessarily going to infringe someone's ability to do what they'd like to do. I mean, this is a commerce issue, this is not a free speech issue. I understand that these individuals are out because they need assistance, but they are not any different than someone who comes to your door and asks you to buy, you know, windows, you use windows, I'm not picking on them, but the sense here is that we want to know who these people are so we can manage them. There are consequences in our ordinance, as I recall, which is if you go out and solicit without a permit, we can act, and if you go out and are acting inappropriately, we can also act. So, you are giving your police stronger ability to manage situations, but you also have a lot of commercial properties where the management of their external area is not as clearly defined. And if the police come and there isn't one person in charge who says, I would like Larry to leave, they can't make Larry leave, sorry. And so, I think principally, you know, I see what, and I understand the concerns, but at the same time, there has to be some way to sort of manage this process for the public because you also have residents who should be able to go about their days and lives without being interfered with. And I get the public safety issue, I mean, we've already gone through this multiple times in the Commonwealth. We all know about kids who've been injured out getting money for thaw, and now they don't do that anymore. I realize there was a car accident, but there were also people at a intersection. We've had firemen, you know, you think about the old days when the fireman would put the boot out and you put the money in and they stood at a stoplight. I mean, that was still happening twenty years ago. It's not happening anymore because a fireman somewhere, I think it was in New York State, got injured because people don't pay attention when they drive. So, we want to manage, and our sidewalk, depending where they are, can be quite busy too. So, again, I don't see the issues, I haven't looked specifically at some of the stuff you're raising, Betsy, but I think you've carved out the things that should be protected, right? You carve out for political activity, which is clearly there, religious organizations, nonprofits, people who are otherwise exercising their free speech. You are also not saying to an individual who is exercising his or her free speech that you can't stand on that sidewalk and put up a protest sign. What you're saying is if you're going to solicit someone for money, you got to have a permit.
Money or goods.
Yeah, money or goods, yeah. I just think it's not that far. I understand the concern, and maybe there's some other things we've got to do in the community to resolve it, but I do think there are, especially urban spaces, where they have definitely, I mean, New York City has zones, and you know it because you know when you go into those zones. You just suddenly, things disappear. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there, I'll entertain the motion, actually. Oh, wait, we don't need to do that.
Actually, it might be helpful in this instance, since there's some discussion, to make a motion to set the public hearing and see how that vote goes.
So, I'll entertain a motion as stated by Amy.
So moved.
Two seconds.
Elliot moved and Susan.
Any further discussion?
Just want to make sure that the date you're referring to is the date that's stated in here because you said a date, but you're referring to the date.
September twenty-four, yes.
September twenty-four. Again, I know I get annoying with this sometimes, but if we have something on the books, it needs to have some bite, so I don't want to just have something just to have something.
Well, and I can work with the solicitor and the interim and the chief to look over, because honestly, when we amended the soliciting regulations, was that last year that we did that, to put in the no-knock? I don't know that we actually amended the entire ordinance. We looked at it, it was from the seventies, but we can take a look at it again and see if there's anything else that, you know, there's teeth or whatever we need anything else to change.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, all of those in favor, it can by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, Supervisor Hacheski?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We're going to have a fun time next time. All right, moving on, Public Works, Proposed Ordinance 2025-649 Temporary Use and Special Event Regulations.
So, one of the board's 2024 work objectives was the creation of special event regulations. I think the concern was we might have folks gathering, and we wanted to have a way to know about that and kind of make sure that we had services taking care of if that happened. So, the zoning officer reviewed our current temporary use regulations, which we use to regulate temporary land uses. Our current ordinance is really focused on retail events, things that require a large-scale tent. You approve those pretty much all summer, the events at Mount Enid and some others that we have. So, she did, Nicole did some research against neighboring municipalities to look at other special event regulations with the goal of trying to streamline special events and temporary uses to make it a little bit more understandable for folks that are having these events. And also, we wanted to take garage sales, yard sales, and block parties off the table because those are neighborhood gatherings, those are events that we want to encourage to continue in the township and not have a layer of regulation. So, we put together a draft ordinance for you to take a look at. One thing I'll call out, it talks about additional municipal services. So, that's if you're having an event and you need the Alpha Fire Company to come for that event or Center Lifelink, making sure that the event organizer is paying for that and that expense wouldn't be coming back to the township. So, if you're okay with these regulations, we can, again, put this up for a public hearing at the September twenty-fourth meeting. If you have questions or concerns, we can certainly take a look at revising things in the ordinance as well.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
As stated in the agenda. Discussion.
I have a question for Amy.
Supervisor Rob.
Amy, how many public hearings is on the twenty-fourth?
There will be three.
Including this one?
Yes, because we moved the bus stop ordinance to the twenty-fourth because Caddo will be at that meeting.
Right, okay, so it's three right now, okay. Thank you.
We can certainly, if you think that's too many, we can certainly move any of these.
I just want to.
Okay.
Supervisor Abrams.
Elliot.
No, I was seconding.
Okay. Supervisor Woodman.
I just wanted to point out that the original concern behind this bill was the unrest in Charlottesville, Virginia, which we all remember. And so, it was in that atmosphere that the board was concerned that we have something in place proactively.
Explain to me again why block parties are not.
So, block parties, typically, that's the kind of activity we want to see and encourage within our neighborhoods because that's a great way to get to know your neighbor. And I'm a big believer that if you know your neighbor, you can address probably ninety-nine percent of the problems that come to the township because you can knock on the door. Block parties, the only regulation they still have, if they're going to close a street, they have to come to the township to get the street closure. And typically, on that application, which we'll also, I know Supervisor Rob brought this up over the summer, we'll revise that application as well, but to make sure they're notifying all the neighbors, so all the neighbors on the street are aware of the block party if it's going to happen.
It's also just much smaller, and there's less.
Yeah, typically, it's.
Less of a public broadcast.
Yeah, typically, it's neighbors gathering outside with some chairs and some food.
It's not like our Philly block parties. Okay. All right, well, there's a motion on the floor, that's been seconded. If no further discussion, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Hacheski.
I can't find the unmute.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to item number six, Planning Zoning, Appointment of Attainable Housing Ordinance Advisory Committee.
So, last month, we gave you the overview of the timeline to create the attainable housing ordinance. When we were discussing how we were going to move forward with this, staff felt it was really important to have an advisory committee that had experts, subject matter experts, and others that do this work every day to help with this creation of the ordinance. So, we have the list of folks, they've all agreed in your agenda item. We're all very excited. I know a couple of them have reached out to me and said how excited they are to work on this. So, once you approve this, we will actually start moving forward with this work.
I thought I was going to be on this committee.
What?
I thought I was going to be on this committee.
You can be on the committee if you want to.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to appoint the individuals listed above to the attainable housing advisory committee.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Supervisor.
That's a great list. I don't know everybody, I know most of the people that they're talking about.
Any other? Okay. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Can I say one other thing?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to all those people, if anyone's listening.
So, is SNA the only home builder people?
They were, I will say that when we looked at our list for advisory committee, Ms. Schoonover, who's the director of the Center County Housing and Land Trust, Jenna Wurgo, are the subject matter experts on this. And when the three of us were brainstorming, we wanted to reach out to folks who had also been involved, college township just redid their ordinance and had some of these folks involved as well. Because the idea is to get a broad base of folks across the community, the people that are actually developing attainable housing and others. I'll also mention just briefly, this is this half-baked idea that I have that I'm going to talk about tomorrow with CBICC Economic Development Committee, but I was thinking, because one of the things we hear from developers about the impediments to attainable housing is that the utility tap fees are very high, so water, sewer, other things. So, I thought about this, and again, people can tell me it's a bad idea, I'm kind of anxious to see what they say tomorrow, but if we could create a fund that people could donate into that would help offset tap fees to a certain percentage for attainable housing projects, would that actually help? You know, people and organizations, municipalities, others could choose or choose not to give money into this fund, but it's similar to, you know, they're trying to get more airlines to come to State College, and they want to set up a fund to help with this. So, this would be a way to maybe help with some of the housing because I think we're reaching critical mass in terms of the need for attainable housing. It's always been here, but it's getting worse because of things are changing in the market. You'll see some of that when we talk about the comp plan up at the center region level, but just a thought is to maybe, can we think a little bit outside the box in addition to other incentives and things that we look at through an ordinance? You're looking at me very skeptically.
Yeah, I'll be curious to see how the.
I don't know how it'll be received. It was one of these half-baked ideas I get when I'm in my car.
Supervisor Abrams.
Is that something that the Center Foundation could do? They have these different charities and some charities that you can send funds to, and it's an organized thing, and, you know, you don't have to contribute, but you could. And so, it's probably easy for them to set up.
Yeah, that's a good thought, absolutely. So, again, we'll see if it goes anywhere, if it has any legs, but.
You have a lot of thoughts on that.
Well, I'd love to hear them afterwards.
Not right now, okay. All right, Morningside Partners Land Development Plan Withdrawal.
So, the board approved a plan for Morningside Partners at Grays Woods to develop a nursing home back on September twelfth, twenty eighteen. The developers reported that plan, but they never actually developed the nursing home. They've approached us because they have a desire to withdraw the plan approval and all of the associated conditions and revert the property back to its residential use. So, we've put together an agreement that would be executed between the township and the developer that formalizes the removal of this plan approval and reverts that property back to residential.
I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Do we know why they pulled out?
Actually, the developers back there, if they have any, I believe that's them, if they have anything to say.
Good evening, all of you. Chris Summers, Morningside Partners, here with one of my colleagues. Thank you for everything you do for the township, first and foremost. And you look back at the timing here, it's all about COVID, and a nursing home just didn't seem to work during that time, so we're going to go back to residential use. Happy to entertain any other questions or?
Okay.
Nope, we're good.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you need a second for the motion, I can offer one.
All right, Administration, get that in here.
Oh, wait, you need to vote on that one.
Oh. Do we have a motion?
You have a motion?
Yes, and seconded. All right, threw me off. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. I was wondering why you are still sitting there. All right, the deed is done. Thank you. All right, Administration, Midyear Financial Report.
All right. So, I'd like to provide an update on where we stand as of June thirtieth. This is the first step, I would say, in our budgeting process. So, I look at where we stand at June thirtieth financially, and then we roll into the CIP, which we'll be talking about next, and then we roll into the budget. So, the, let me, let me get that dot smaller. So, the year-to-date revenues are running a little bit under budget at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. However, the expenditures are running a little bit more under budget. So, that means that, and a lot of the revenues that are running under budget, and typically, this is the grants and stuff for some projects, the grants we haven't got yet are the projects that we may push off for a year because of, but our EITs running ahead, our real estate's running a little bit under, our LSD's running ahead. One of the big numbers that's running below budget is the real estate transfer tax because if you remember last year, we had some big properties that sold and bumped up that, and then we budget based on an average, and we're going to be below average. So, this tells us also that our expenditures are four percent versus our, under budget versus our revenues, which are three percent under budget. We're making adjustments, knowing that our revenue's under, we're making adjustments on the expenditures. Okay. So, the real estate tax is tracking, I said a little bit under budget, that's the main number, so it's.
Wow, we're getting used in the big garage. Wow, we're getting used in the big garage. And using our big old garage.
And the real estate transfer tax is tracking 23% under budget. And that's, just like I said. And overall, we're tracking, across the board, 4% under budget. So, that should be it with the mid... The mid-year replay. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Sorry, I got a little bit thrown off there.
That... Okay. That was the easiest report I've seen. Okay. Nice.
Okay.
Someone was really excited, though.
As usual, looks like you've done everything that's fiscally possible.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Supervisor Rob.
Larry, I know you do an excellent job. You remember last year when we transferred to the new company? Did that have any effect on...
On the real estate taxes?
Yeah.
It has not had any effect on what we are collecting.
Okay.
Because we're still collecting. Where it's had a big effect is in the amount of staff time it takes to administer the new tax law. Where I had spent a great deal of time in the last week just trying to... We got a large check from one of the escrow companies. And you can't go property by property and enter it. You have to upload it into the system. And it was, it was difficult trying to juggle all the different entities. But we finally got that done this afternoon. So we were able to deposit that check. Because we can't deposit the check until we apply it to the properties. So, it's not affecting how we are collecting, but it is affecting the timing, I would say.
Okay. Thank you.
And that'll get easier as y'all become more familiar?
Is that a learning curve?
Or is...
I hope it's part of a learning curve, but some of it isn't. There's been... One of the things that happened this year is, is people build new houses. They come up with interim billings. So you're paying for real estate taxes for part of the year. When they originally did the interim billing, the software company had entered the wrong tax rate in. So, we had to...
Redo.
If you remember back in March, when they did the billing, they said not the wrong bills.
That's my concern.
This time, they did it, but they forgot to say not the bills, which was good news. Even though, so the first bill that everybody got was correct because we noticed, as I noticed, that the amount that they were charging for the tax rate was incorrect for the tax. So, we do have those issues that we're still working on. The yes, there are some growing pains. I think that Valerie Good, our tax specialist, really knows the system very well. I think Luana knows the system very well. And I am, I know the system very well, since I have to create some of these files to upload. So, yeah. So we're, hopefully, come March, things are a lot better.
Yeah, because that was my concern with the new company and the glitches they had, where the older company we were hearing was better equipped with...
Well, the older company was local.
Yes.
Was in the center region. And they provided a lot of...
Support.
Services. That, it's a little bit harder to get from this company, but I've turned it to a squeaky wheel, so they...
Thank you.
Supervisor Whitman.
So, Juan, what is the name of this new company?
Government Service Solutions. GSS.
GSS.
Okay.
I think it's Government Service Solutions.
Okay. Where are they based?
They're in northwestern Pennsylvania.
Yeah. I think they're in Wayne, PA, or somewhere around there.
And how long is our contract with them?
So it's through the county.
That's a good question.
And the county has been super receptive, I would like to say this to our concerns, and is actually working with the vendor to deal with things through the contract for us. So they've been very receptive because this last issue that we had, I think they realized it wasn't just a patent township issue, it was a global issue. Anybody that changed their tax rate last year, up or down, had the bills go out with the wrong rate on it. So the county has been a great ally to all of us and all of us.
Oh, good. But still, how long is the contract? Five years?
I don't know.
Okay.
We don't know, because that was all done outside of our purview.
Yeah, I remember that. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Abrams.
This is probably extraneous, but the initials of the company is almost like one of my puns. Guess. GSS.
Yes.
And you're doing something, you don't just guess.
Yeah, I think they're having a little difficulty dealing with the many different aspects of the center region of Center County, because they're doing the whole county. So you go from, you know, small tax collectors who don't have access to internet all the way up to the biggest ones being Ferguson and Patton.
Well, hopefully, this can be a learning, a growth edge for them, and maybe building up their business to get more staff to...
Yep. I hope so.
Make sure to troubleshoot some of these things. All right. If there's nothing else, moving on to item B, board input for the 2026-2030, 2026 to 2030 Capital Improvement Plan.
Do you want me to take this, or do you want to do it? That's your idea.
Oh. Yeah, I mean, I can take this idea. So, capital improvement plan, we're able to suggest things as board members. Yeah, I've just become aware in talking with different entities about the funding cuts, you know, from the federal level and how that has sort of tapped some of the coffers of some of our local agencies who help to support our residents, those in the region in different ways. And so, yeah, my thought was, some individuals have come to me that I've been partnering with, and we talked about potentially what can we do as elected official or local governance to help supply some funding to some of our nonprofits here locally. And so, yeah, this is just me wanting to propose that we include in our CIP some funding that can be accessible to different nonprofits who can request funding to provide resources in the ways that they see fit for basic, sort of like necessities that individuals may have surrounding, like anti-poverty related things. And so, food, housing-related stuff, other things. So, hopefully, this can be part of a broader effort. And those individuals that, again, I'm connected with will be bringing some of these recommendations to different municipalities to band together, to create a larger sustaining effort to help support some of our nonprofits locally, financially. So, yeah, figured it'd be a nice place to start with us to get the ball rolling. I can answer any other questions if people have it. Or Amy, if you have any thoughts.
Yeah, I just suggested that we put in an item at $7,500. Just, you know, we can put it in for the five years, and then after this year, we can adjust up or down as necessary. But, I mean, I think it's a nice way to do this, because then you have the money in the budget and then you don't, you're not dependent on saying, "Come make the request in October, and then we give it out in January." You have it in there and you hear about, there's a need with the food bank, for example. You could then give money to the food bank at a certain time of year when they're in need. Or CenterSafe is another good example.
Supervisor Abrams.
Do you need a motion for that?
You can just buy consensus if you agree. You won't put it in the CIP for further discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's fine.
You're okay with $7,500?
Mm-hmm.
What about 10,000?
I was waiting for it.
Look and see how 10,000, 10,000...
I mean, we can, we can put 10,000 in and then we can discuss it during the CIP and, you know, when we have all the numbers in front of us.
Okay.
And that amount is $10,000 for the five-year period?
$10,000 per year.
Per year. Oh, okay. That makes a little more sense.
Yes.
That's great.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it would be super great if other municipalities also took the same, had the same idea, agreed with this idea. And so that it ends up in the, or we have, at least have a discussion at the COG level. It's great. Thank you for that.
Yeah, there'll be some information coming to the...
General Court.
To our township that, and other townships, sort of expressing, advocating for this initiative and endeavor. So, that'll be coming soon. But, yeah, I guess my wondering then, it would probably be helpful for me to work with one of our staff to figure, or probably just you, I guess, to figure out stipulations, guidelines around this stuff.
Supervisor Abrams has his hand up.
Since prediction is hazardous when it relates to the future, should we put in some wording so that we can adjust this from year to year if we need to?
Yeah, you could actually adjust it every year during the CIP process. So, you could say, oh, we gave, I'm making this up, $40,000 out last year because the need is so great.
Whoa.
So we don't need to add something special?
Yes.
No one's asking for $40,000.
And then we can adjust.
Get up there and age. Weezy. Elizabeth.
Yeah. Again, I think this would just be... What is our, not our motto, our mission again, Amy?
Health, safety, and welfare.
Health, safety, and welfare.
Of our residents, yeah.
And so, we, I mean, we understand that typically, as Amy has pointed out, you know, the human services work is really, you know, in the avenue of like the county and, you know, federal, sort of like agencies. But I think when they are falling short, and there's not a knock at the county, because obviously, I think they have a lot less resources available, you know, to allocate. But I think it's good when we're able to step up and fill the gap, you know, even if it is just for one person who's struggling, their car, you know, ran out on them and, you know, they needed some emergency funding for, you know, to get that back up so that they can get to work, or schooling, or take their kids to, you know, childcare. I think that, that impact can have wide-ranging, sort of like impacts. And so, with us being able to help support in this way, I think it'd be helpful and in alignment with the mission.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to COGS Parks Governance Documents.
So, the Parks and Recreation Governance Special Committee, which Supervisor Hachusky is a member of, completed its review of and referred two new draft documents to you. The first is the CRPR Authority Intergovernmental Relationship Agreement, which formalizes the relationship between the COG and the municipalities. And the second is the update of the 1988 Policy for Accepting Recreation and Park Facilities in the Regional System. So that is when we have a new park and we go to the COG and propose that the park take over maintenance of that. These are two fairly complicated documents in that the 1988 policy was literally, if it's four acres or more, the COG takes it, you just have to ask them by June. So they're trying to formalize the policy a little bit more. So the Recreation Advisory Committee and Susan Wheeler, our project manager, and myself reviewed the documents. I will say, the municipal managers discussed this this morning at our municipal managers' breakfast, and the discussion centered on, this is the first draft of all of these documents. The COG is really looking for comments, and then they want to further refine them. I just want to touch on a couple of comments that the RAC, Susan and myself, had. The first being on the policy for accepting parks into the COG. The biggest one for us really is the first evaluation criteria says that the parks have to align with the Center Region COG's comprehensive plan for parks. We have our own parks plan, which we update every five years. In fact, we're in the process of updating it now. So we don't agree that our parks should align with the COG's plan. They should align with our plan. Because the discussion we had, municipal managers, we might all want to have this one certain piece of play equipment, because it's very popular. I'll use, actually, use pickleball courts as a good example. We may want everybody to have a pickleball court. So we don't want the COG plan to say, "You only need two pickleball courts in the center region," right? We want to be able to do what's right and what our residents want. And we do a lot of surveying of our residents. That's one of the things the RAC and Susan work pretty diligently on. So we know what our residents want, and when we're replacing equipment, we're doing it based on their needs and wants. So, that was our first comment. Our second one was that, and this is probably one of my bigger concerns, is that the COG wants to have early coordination with you into planning and what you're doing with your park. Again, parks are local decisions. The COG maintains them and programs them, but what we put in the park should be the decision of Patent Township, not Center Region COG. So I don't know that early coordination is likely needed. And then, this comment came from a member of the RAC. Susan and I actually went to the RAC meeting, and this is a great comment. I brought this up, I attended the Parks Capital Committee meeting for Susan and brought this up at that meeting. But we had talked a lot about the regional parks a long time ago when they were being developed, and we talked about the plan for them. But sort of the maintenance side of it wasn't really discussed. So Greg Turner, who's on the RAC, said, you know, "These need to be looked at differently, because they're supposed to be sports complexes, they're supposed to make money, right? There're supposed to be softball fields and all kinds of other things there." So they're different from a municipal park that is serving a localized, more localized area. So they really need to have a business model, and there should be sponsorship opportunities, and there should be ways to monetize these parks. It's similar to the State College Spikes, if you've been to a Spikes game this summer. They have a landscaping company that pays a fee, right, to be a sponsor for the landscaping for them. And there's outfield space that's all sold, and there's naming rights and things. So, he suggested, and I would agree, because this is kind of how we've always operated the pools. The pools, back in 2008, we borrowed money to redo the pools. And the pools, we never had to pay into until coming attraction, we'll have to pay into this year, I guess. But the pools always took care of themselves, because they're a business model. And that, their business model was set up to take care of themselves. So the regional park model needs to be looked at, because we're having this issue with parks maintenance now, whereby the COG doesn't have a lot of staff. They've really had some staffing struggles, which then translates down to struggles with maintenance of our parks. Now you have regional parks to maintain. If you monetize those parks and give them a business model, that takes some of the stress off of what you're doing on the municipal side. So there needs to be a little more discussion about how we're doing things. And then, I also don't think a one-size-fits-all approach to this dedication policy necessarily works, because our parks are different across the region. As I always remind my colleagues, Patent Township is the gold standard of parks, and we're very happy to be the gold standard of parks. We have resources that we put into our parks because our residents want that. State College Borough, Ferguson College, Harris, they're all different. And they don't contribute to the level that we do in terms of their parks. So a one-size-fits-all approach isn't going to work. We also have two parks, Circleville and Burnell Road, that are destination parks. That, you know, they really, back in the day, if we would have had these discussions, would have been regional parks, because they are destinations. So, I don't agree with this one-size-fits-all approach. I don't agree with anything that takes away from our autonomy within Patent Township to determine what we're doing. And I don't agree with anything that takes away from our ability to have our parks maintained to that standard that we're looking for, right? So, those are the comments on that document. And then the other document, the Intergovernmental Relationship Agreement. This document is a little more complicated. The conversation we had this morning, I said, "Has anyone surveyed the municipalities to find out the issues that they're having with the relationship with the authority?" We happen to have a very good authority representative, Clara Franklin. She comes and talks with the Parks Committee, or the RAC. She comes and talks with the board when necessary. I'm not sure what happens in the other municipalities. I'm not sure what happens in the other municipalities. But if that's the issue, if the issue is communication, I don't know that you need this separate agreement to address it. The Parks Capital Committee should have been taken away years ago. That really should have died after the parks were planned, the regional parks. So I think there's more discussion that's needed. I think there's, it's a very complicated document to solve, a problem that may or may not exist. So the COG is asking for comments back on this by September nineteenth. We gave you the comments again that the RAC, Susan and myself put together. If you have any additional comments, we can add them. If you're supportive of these comments, we can certainly send these comments along. My understanding is this is far from the final draft. Ben indicated this morning that this was just the first draft and we would continue to refine. Susan, like I said, was at the RAC meeting. She's our representative to the governance and the Parks Capital Committee. So she's also online and can offer any thoughts she might have.
Supervisor Abrams.
I, I agree with what, everything you said and I'll support it.
Supervisor Heschewski.
So one of the things that, um, through this, that has been kind of nagging at me, we see all the time in project management, a project started and, and the maintenance part of the project, they deal with bridges, they deal with everything. They don't consider that the financial burden of maintenance. And so this kind of goes with everything that Amy just said. Those agreements always have to have that in the back of their mind of how these parks are going to be maintained. There have been problems in other regions in the past where things have become overgrown and, because nobody knows whose job it is to keep, keep things the way they should be kept. So I'd just like to reiterate that, uh, that should be just a strong consideration. With the Whitehall property, all we heard was, it was a project management issue. And I'm hoping they'll listen now to the project managers.
I mean, I agree with everything you said. I, I guess the wondering though I do have is, um, so if we want to develop a park and we decide to move forward with that, is the expectation that CRPR is going to be maintaining it?
So yes, historically, that has always been the expectation. And I will say that probably there needs to be, I, I don't disagree that there needs to be changes to the four acres or more, come all and come all policy that we seem to have now. And again, that policy was written when the COG was a vastly different agency and the municipalities were vastly different agencies. So yes, that needs to be discussed. I also think, long-term, the conversation at the township level needs to be, if the COG can't provide the maintenance services that we need, right? And if, and they mentioned about doing these memorandums of understanding. We've been trying to get the COG to do one with us for our parks maintenance. Because if they can't provide the things that we need, then we need to be able to go, come back to you and say, we need to think about hiring seasonal help to help with our parks in the summer. We need to think about, and the Borough already does that. Some of the other municipalities already bring on seasonal help for things. But it would be helpful if we knew, right now, the COG maintains two hundred and six acres of our parkland for us. It would be helpful if we knew that they're not able to maintain more than a hundred and ninety acres, so we have to pick up the additional acreage. And that's what that looks like for our operations. Like, I think there needs to be a whole conversation. Because I certainly understand the staffing concerns that they're having. And I understand they're exploring ways to deal with that. They're exploring some new technology and some other things. But I, I think the conversation has to be a much broader one. An understanding of, again, we don't all have the same parks program. The Borough has a lot of parks that are not four acres because the Borough, COG started around the parks back in the nineteen forties, right? And the Borough had all the parks back then. So the Borough gets sort of grandfathered in on some of these things, which is great. There are other things that happen that need to be considered as well. So we need to have a much broader conversation. And the managers have been saying, perhaps that conversation needs to be at the manager level and the RAC Parks Committee's parks person. Not every municipality has a dedicated person like we do. But it needs to be at the staff level and then come to elected officials for further policy level discussions.
Okay, so you're saying we need an MOU?
And that is one of their recommendations, is to do an MOU for every park. I don't know if it should be for every park or if it should be for the municipality itself. There is an example from a, a park that I was familiar with a few years ago where Center Region just didn't maintain a field. And when they were questioned on it, they said they weren't sure that they were supposed to still be maintaining it. So there needs to be some, if you don't do it, this is the recourse, right? And the other thing, and this thing has long bothered me, we pay a flat fee. It's not based on our acreage that's being maintained. We pay a fee that's based on a modified COG formula for parks, which is a lot of algebra to come up with a number. And then years ago, we used to say, you need to give us a report, which they do now. They didn't for years, though. They did not give us a report to say what they were maintaining. So I'd rather see them say, it's going to cost X amount of dollars per acre, right? And then we make the decision, and the programming, we are very happy with. We want them to continue to do programming, I think, across the region. But we then can say, as part of our budget process, look, they're going to maintain for this amount of money. So let's look at our parks, let's look at the special circumstances that we have and what can we do to supplement and where do we need to be, right? And then we have, then we know, then we're paying a concrete figure for something that is just for the maintenance.
And so, uh, just for clarification, sorry if I missed it. What they're asking with this item number B is they're trying to be involved in the process in the developmental stage, like early on.
Yeah, so reading that proposed change to that parks dedication policy, yes, they want to have more of a say. And it does say in there, and this bothers me, it says in there that they can deny your park for any, for reasons.
Okay, okay.
And that bothers me because if you, if they come in early enough and they're like onboard, ready, go, 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 go. And then at the end, when you're ready to turn it over and the expectation is they'll maintain it and then they come in and go, well, there's a water feature, we can't possibly take on the liability of a water feature. I mean, I'm making that up. But I don't want them to have the ability to pull the plug because that hurts the municipality, right, the member.
For sure. So yeah, no, I, I agree with like, yeah, having them part of the process, um, early on to determine whether or not they're capable of, you know, maintaining. And if not, we'll just pivot and go somewhere else. But as far as the decision-making ability, um, that, that's not possible. And I guess this, the intergovernmental, this would mean then other entities would have a, a, a say in whether or not we develop a park?
So my understanding of the intergovernmental relationship agreement, and I could be wrong. I attended a Parks Governance Committee meeting last year for Supervisor Abrams. And at that meeting, there was some discussion that one of the member municipalities, I won't say which one, was having some issues getting, uh, communication back from their authority representative. And that a lot of these concerns were being put into this document. And I think it goes back years. I don't think it was a, a new thing. So I think what the discussion the managers had today was, number one, that Parks Capital Committee really has needed to be sunset since twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And so that probably needs to happen. But then maybe the Parks and Rec Authority was set up in the nineteen seventies and it was largely the financing authority because the COG didn't have, doesn't have the ability to go out and borrow money. And so it was largely the venue to, to borrow the money to do the pools and things. So maybe the discussion should be, let's look at the authorities' agreements and bylaws and do they need to be updated? Because there's a middleman right now that I don't know we need, right? And we did do this, this all stemmed from a comprehensive report that the Center Region COG did back in twenty twenty-one, the Parks and Rec did. And so this all came out of that. And again, we talked about this globally today. The COG is a vastly different agency than it was even ten years ago because it's doing services it didn't do before. It has more staff than it's ever had. Those are all very good things. So it's kind of time to reboot, and this can be a common theme, I think you're going to hear over the next couple of years, to kind of reboot and reimagine some of the services and some of the programs to bring them up to more modern times.
Yeah. So moving forward, sorry, I'm on the COG plan. The boards should discuss the internal comments. Oh, yeah, I, I, I agree with all the comments.
If you're supportive, I can submit these as your comments from the board and Patent Township.
And these are all your added suggestions from you, Susan and Susan.
Yeah, Susan actually compiled this for me.
Great, one hundred percent.
Okay. Moving forward, uh, COG Local Planning Services.
Okay, remember I talked about the reboot, reimagine? Going right along with that theme. So, um, the COG notified, there are still only two members of the local planning program, Patent Township and Harris Township. And we've been having discussions with the COG since Mike Tilk was the director just a couple of months ago, but we've been talking about this for a while. But the COG is gonna, um, draw the curtain, to use a theater analogy, on local planning at the end of December twenty twenty-five. Because frankly, there's just, planners are very difficult to hire and there just isn't the ability to staff the program anymore. And things have changed. So while that's sad to see happen, I think it's also good for CRPA because they're actually going to kick off a strategic planning process to look at the services that they provide. And will they shift into sustainability, transportation, and then do some regional? How that will look moving forward and how that looks for staffing the agency. So again, I think it's a good opportunity sort of for everybody. So we're currently paying the COG fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars a year for local planning. Last year, we build out two thousand, or, I'm sorry, yeah. This year, we build out two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars of Jenna Worgo's time for plan reviews. Obviously, the billable time is dependent on how many plans we get in. So, and that, again, that number does vary. So the COG has been providing to us ordinance development, plan reviews, assistance with our rezoning requests, and educational presentations to the Planning Commission. So in kind of discussing the end of local planning, I did ask Ben and Pam Adams, because we have two complicated things going on right now. The Park Forest Middle School Plan, which has a conditional use attached to it, which you will start seeing in the next couple of weeks. And then the Attainable Housing Ordinance, which is a goal of ours to get done and we'd like to have done and in place by June of twenty twenty-six. So I've asked, since Jenna is the expert and she is driving the bus a hundred percent on the Park Forest Middle School Plan and the Attainable Housing Ordinance, that we be allowed to contract some of her time to keep those projects finished, get them finished. And they're fine with that. So then I sat down and I started talking and had a lot of conversations with Mark Bockel, who's the Harris Township manager. Some of you may remember that Mark has his certification of planning, AICP, and he was the principal planner of the COG for twelve years. So Mark is an expert in planning. So Mark and I talked about what this looks like. Do we partner together? Do we hire somebody? How do we move forward? A lot of the conversation that we had was, if we bring someone in, what does that look like? So I like to benchmark us against similar-sized communities. Most of our similar-sized communities are in the southeastern part of the state. We actually have a lot of friends who are managers of those communities. So I did some research. In the southeastern part of the state, similarly sized communities have planners, but they're the planner, building code zoning. And the department is all-in-one. Obviously, our building codes are done by the Center Region Code Office and we have Nicole as our zoning officer. So that isn't necessarily going to work because we're not going to bring building codes. I would never want to bring building codes in-house. The code office is very good at what they do. And then Mark and I talked about, if we bring someone in, what does that look like? And he mentioned the job market is difficult for planners right now because planners really want to come in and do sustainability and some other pieces that we wouldn't offer, right? It would be ordinance, I mean, I get excited about ordinances, but not everybody. Ordinance development, plan reviews, education, it wouldn't be the exciting stuff that a planner maybe wants to do. So after talking about all of this, um, the COG had reached out to a, a third-party firm to see if they would come in and do plan reviews. They were kind of thinking this would start in September. Now in discussions, they're not going to do that, they're going to finish out the year for us. But I talked with the person from, the principal from this third-party firm about them coming in and doing planning for us and what that would look like. They're very amenable to it, they're located in Pittsburgh. The gentleman is a Penn State grad, loves to come up here. They have planners and old municipal manager, not old retired municipal managers and others that were municipal managers on staff. And I want to say that they're old, they're not. So they're very willing to help us and would provide us with a quote if we're interested in moving that direction. But thought process being, they would come in and do plan reviews. Mark said, and, and I appreciated this, he said, you know, most ordinances that you want to update, you can almost always find them online, right? Like, and we always borrow from each other in the center region. So we can have the third party if we need help with the ordinance development, but we can try to tackle that, you know, on our own, within our resources here. They can do some education with our Planning Commission, with our zoning officer, with whatever we would need. And again, they're willing to give us a quote for this relationship, which would start January one. So I wanted to get the board's feelings on how you kind of wanted to move forward. What Harris Township is doing, and I agree with this a hundred percent, they're going to go in a third-party direction, but they're going to try it for a year and see what happens. And I would say we do the same thing. We try this on, you know, and, and we don't commit yet. Until maybe August of twenty-six, we talk about it again and see like, this is working really well, this is great. Or, you know what, we really want to bring somebody in-house. And then having Ryan here, we can sit down with Ryan and try to figure out how we find a planner and what that structure looks like. So again, I wanted to just get your feelings on all of this this evening.
Are we getting our forty-nine thousand dollars back?
No.
Why?
We pay the COG for her services. We bill out, we get the twenty-three hundred dollars back.
Okay. Supervisor Abrams.
Historically, and this may be hard to believe, this was before my time, this was decided. But, um, the county actually did all the planning for the whole, all the municipalities in the county. And then the Center Region decided correctly, I think, that the county was unable to provide the level of services that we needed here. And so all the local agencies were set up. Is that still the correct model or should we go back and work with the county on this?
So we could certainly, I'm looking at Betsy. We could certainly have a conversation with the county. I don't know that the county has the staff to do what we need them to do in the planning office. I think the way it was, and I understand the way that it was set up. It was set up because the Center Region had a lot of things going on and the county had everybody, right? So the Center Region parsed itself off. I don't, again, I don't know that the county would have the ability to provide the services.
Reason I ask that is if, if the Center Region were part of the county's system, they would have the funding perhaps to have more people. They don't need them now because the Center Region is not part of what they do.
Well, and the other complicating piece of this, and this is why maybe we have to do more of the third-party thing for a year and see what happens, because CRPC, right, is staffed by Center Region Planning. So as part of this strategic plan, we sort of have to discuss what happens to the Center Region Planning Commission because the county has its own Planning Commission. They don't do any of the Center Region plans.
Hey, y'all got, y'all done that back and forth, y'all got that scene that working hard over at Plant Farm. You're doing a good job over there, I love the production. All right, well, I mean, yeah.
I just wondered about the Michelle Marrow, who we have, where's her firm located? Are they?
She's in Machanan.
So she, is that her firm's in Machanan?
Yeah, she lives in Osceola Mills, yep.
So I'm, I'm, it's obvious, um, challenge to me in this arrangement seems to be transportation. I know that was a concern when we were talking about having an engineer contracted as opposed to in-house. Was having that person available and?
So Michelle's here thirty hours a week. And it's a little bit different of an arrangement with the engineer. We have a lot going on engineer-wise. And now we have Ryan, who has engineering background as well. But it's a little different with her, with a planner, right? So there's no requirement under the MPC that we have a planner provide a plan review. But we do it because it's good practice, right? So having a third-party firm that would zoom in from Pittsburgh to have a staff meeting or whatever, I think would be okay in this scenario, right? And then if we needed to request them to come in because we're working on something a little more complex, we could certainly do that.
And obviously, the travel and lodging would be included in the annual budget?
Yes, I would have to get, um, when I talked with, his name is John Trant, the principal from this firm that the COG had talked with, we had talked about, he had mentioned like, oh, we would put in the contract that you would have two hours of like retainer time. So if Michelle, if Michelle or Nicole or Ryan or myself had a planning question, you could pick up the phone and call for fifteen minutes, you wouldn't get a bill. It would just be covered in that time that they would have, which is kind of a nice way to do it because we do have random planning things that come up during the day.
Sure, yeah, yeah. That's sort of, the sort of water cooler questions. I mean, that you could walk into somebody's office, okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it sounds good. I was just concerned about the logistics of the location and the travel.
Or we could drive out, or y'all could drive out to save money.
Road trip, I like that.
Sure.
I'm just saying.
I have friends in Pittsburgh.
Depending on the numbers, like.
If the skill is around them, we can. The Steelers are home, then we can.
No. The Steelers are home, the chief and Larry will go.
Yeah, the principal planner gets stuck in, I'm in traffic, sorry. I'll be there, and yet, we're still charging you.
The nice thing with technology is we have all of this technology now that they can participate with us remotely.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I think I like the idea of trying it out for a year to see how that, that goes.
So I can get a quote. I will move forward with that. And then you guys can talk about it maybe next meeting as well. And then we can include it in the budget if you're okay with it. Some of the costs will be offset because, you know, it'll be higher dollar amount in terms of the hourly figure, but that'll be billed out, same with Michelle's time. And then it would just be the stuff that isn't billable, but we can try to minimize that as well. There are some larger picture things I think we'd like to do planning-wise, but we would secure grants to help pay for those larger picture things.
And you'd have numbers that would compare and contrast having somebody in-house versus.
Right, because you would be saving the overhead of hiring somebody and paying the benefits.
Okay, for sure.
Great. Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Rob?
Amy, do we have a number for how many projects we have?
Per?
Right, right now?
So right now, we have three plans.
Oh, okay.
That we're working through. We haven't, the development hasn't been as busy as it has been in the past necessarily.
Okay.
The Park Forest Middle School Plan is by far the most complex one that we have. The others are more routine in nature. So, you know, if we would see a Toth Trees Resort Plan, for example, that is going to be a lot more time than the more routine plans that we tend to see.
Okay. Thank you.
So if I wanted to submit a plan to Panhandle on North Atherton, who would we go through, like internal or a third party? I'm just kidding.
I am not encouraging any of this.
Moving on. We don't have vermin yet. All right, I'll make consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown on the agenda.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Am I cursor in the wrong place?
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. I just feel like in 20 years, someone's going to look back at DCNET videos and be like, that person didn't say anything on Zoom. It's all invalid. All right, managers' report?
So just going to highlight a couple of things. Number one, on the 20th, which is not this weekend, but next weekend, myself, Tom Fontaine, and a couple others will be participating at the Penn State School of Public Policy, which is where our intern came from, Paige, on a local government day, something we've been working with Julian and some others at Penn State to make a reality so that we can explain and show how fun local government is and why everybody should have a career in local government. And that local government is more than just paving roads, plowing snow and writing a budget. We do a lot of fun things. So we're excited about the opportunity. I'm also going to be touting internship opportunities with Patent Township as well because we want to continue to grow our intern program. If you would like to come along or send some information with me, that would be awesome too. Because we want folks to realize that local government is where it is at, right? Like, I'm just going to beat that drum. Yes, it's where it's at. So that'll be happening next Saturday. I think we have to be there at 8:00 AM. And then they're doing a policy simulation as well on local government issues. So I helped out in the winter when they did the other one and it was really cool. So I'm excited for the thing. Second thing, the CCATO Fall Convention is September 30th at Toth Trees. I know Betsy would like to go. I know Susan said she wanted to go. I know Pam is not available to go. Sutan, Elliot, if you'd like to go, it's a meal at Toth Trees. It should be fun. I will also not be there. I have to get to Erie with Pam for PML.
What is it again?
September 30th. It starts at, registration starts at 5:00, dinner's at 6:00. There's a soda station, there's perhaps some drink tickets. There's vendors, there's, we're doing a township showcase. So we're going to have people talk about what makes their township cool and special. So if somebody wants to talk about Patent Township.
Yeah, I remember that was going to be tough. That's the one, someone wanted us to come earlier to help out.
Yeah, that's the one that Susan had asked for. We were soliciting help.
Yeah, and I'll need a ride to that.
I may be able to attend, I just can't unfortunately come earlier with work conflict.
I'll register you. I'll take care of you.
Oh, okay.
What, what time is it?
That's the CCATO event, September 30th at Toth Trees.
Yeah, but the time that it starts?
It's at.
The time? Okay.
But the meal starts at 6:00. You don't really have to go at 5:00. Susan wants help with setup at 4:00.
Susan Traynor recruited Susan Justky and myself.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I have the right thing in my calendar.
Sorry, Susan Traynor. I can't help, but I can attend.
Okay, and then last thing, just to give you an update on the short-term rentals. I believe we're up to 21 so far. Nicole did a demo with a company, Deckard, which is who everybody else in the Center Region uses. It's software that mines, it's like AI mines all the websites where you can list your rentals and then sends out letters saying, hey, there's short-term rental regulations in Patent Township. This is what you need to do. And then helps get those people registered and get them to get a permit. They anticipate we actually have more like 350 short-term rentals. So we're going to include money in the 2026 operating budget to move forward with getting the software so that we can take some burden off of Nicole. Because Nicole and I fall down the rabbit hole and look at all the sites to find things. But we've been doing a lot of, she's been doing a lot of education with residents about the need. And I'll make a plug. Number one, if you have a short-term rental, please get your rental housing permit, go through the safety inspection. Number two, if you are a resident living next to a short-term rental and it is causing you concerns, please reach out. If it's on the weekend, call the non-emergency number, 1-800-479-0050. If it's during the week, call us at the office because we can reach out and try to assess nuisance points if we need to. We're trying to work with a number of the short-term rentals that are causing issues, particularly in Park Forest right now. So that's it. I will answer any questions you may have.
Amy, do the non-emergency number a little slower. Thank you.
We need a better number. I don't know why y'all's, not just us, but these non-emergency numbers. I don't remember that.
I'm not in charge of that.
In my 23 years, that's been it. So it's been, it's from, you know, early 2000s, late 90s. So it's been around for a while.
This is not an emergency. It's probably too many numbers. Okay. So you're just going to bypass the single-use plastics update?
Oh, no. So we have a meeting next week, the working group, and we're going to finalize the survey that we're going to send out to the businesses. And then we're going to start doing community engagement on single-use plastics. Because we want to hear from businesses and we want to hear from residents and we want to take feedback and then incorporate it into draft ordinance, which you guys will then discuss. We're interested because some members of the single-use plastic working group are all in and some are sitting on the fence. So the next phase will kind of tell the tale of what we're going to do, I think.
All in meaning they want to move forward with the regulation?
Yeah, and then there are some that want to hear and want to hear from their residents and their business community, which I appreciate.
Sweet.
Such a procedural question. So it says that a full written report is included in the packet, but I'm not seeing it as an attachment?
It was in there. Should have been in there.
I've got the electronic one. Oh, it's, it is in here.
It's in there, should have been in the electronic one.
Item nine.
Okay. Sometimes.
Second to last one.
It's item nine.
Yeah.
Okay. Item 10, committee reports, any additions?
Supervisor Rob, I forgot to print your public safety report, but I'll include it in the September 24th packet.
All right. Moving on, any other business?
Question. Amy, when we go down to the PML conference, the resolutions, are we going to go over that on the 24th?
So I did, they did send me the resolutions that we got. And unlike PSATs, they're not this big, huge packet. And I looked back and we hadn't done that in years past.
Okay.
So I could include them on the agenda for the 24th if you'd like to see them?
No, if they haven't done, I know we've done other conferences.
Yeah, the PSATs are more detailed and.
Okay. That's fine, because I'm, I know I'm the alternate for Susan. And I just want to make sure if we had any objections to any of the resolutions, please let us know before we get down there.
Yeah, their resolution process is a little more streamlined than PSATs.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
It is done.